Commissioner, why not? This is City Council, Joint City Council. Nesper's County Commissioner, Special Weeding Agenda, June 16, 2025, at the time and place as advertised. Counsel President Cleaver.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. In lieu of the fact that the prosecutor is going to need to do a meeting shortly, I would move that we would change the agenda to move Item C Prosecution Services to, or below, item A Emergency Management. I guess making that be...
Wait a second, let me...
I'll accept that.
So make this the joint effort?
Moved by Council President Cleaver, accepted by Commissioner Lee to move, rearrange the agenda, move Prosecution Services, Item 4C, to right after Item 4A Emergency Management Discussion. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next order of business is types of allegiance. If you'd please stand before us to decide on your pledge.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner Havens, is there any quick comments you'd like to say? Welcome all of us before we can assist in comments.
No, really. I appreciate the opportunity, City, as always. And thank you for hosting. I understand, I think everyone's going to be over at office, so we'll hear them right now. Not quite right. So maybe next time.
Thank you, Commissioner. Next up is citizen comments. Roman number three, this is an opportunity for individuals wishing to comment on items, other items, matters they wish to bring to the council's attention, excluding those scheduled for public carrying. It may not be another opportunity to comment once the agenda items are addressed. Individuals are encouraged to speak at this time. Individuals are encouraged to discuss operational issues in connection with the mayor and my students, if they consider it reasonable, to speak. Commentary is limited between comments. Does this citizen comment today? Okay, doesn't look like it, so we'll move on. Roman number four, Joint City of Lewis and Nesper's County Discussion Items. Please note that identifying an item as an action item does not require the City Council to vote on that item. Item A is Emergency Management. This is an action item, and we have our Emergency Management Coordinator with us, Mr. James Wurcheck. And so with that, I will turn the floor over to you.
All right. I'm James Wurcheck. I'm the Emergency Manager for Nesper's County. So some of the things that I've been working on this past year, we completed our Emergency Operations Plan. We completed a catastrophic disaster plan. We have pending the multi-hazard mitigation plan. And the only thing we have, that I have left to collect for that is the resolutions from Cul-de-sac and Lapway. Lapway is supposed to have it on their agenda today to review, and hopefully they'll have that tomorrow, on the 31st of May. Cul-de-sac reviewed and approved, so I just have not gotten a resolution yet. Soon as I get those two other resolutions, I will send that forward to IOEM for review, and then they send it on to FEMA. There was some very minor changes that were made from the last time. We discussed that at your council meeting and with the county. Nothing significant at all. And when it's done, I'll certainly send everybody a copy of it. I'll post it on our website with the other plans. We've had an exercise with the Lewiston Orchard Irrigation District about two weeks ago. We have an exercise at the Lewiston Airport coming up on the 26th of June. Done multiple trainings over the course of the last six months, from January through today, probably 25 courses or so through the FEMA website. Going to be working on some exit signs for the new courthouse for evacuation. And those are the projects up to June that I've been working on. Any other questions?
So you're, when you do your exercises, like with Lloyd, for instance, what do you do? What's encompassed?
So this one was a, more or less a, kind of like the cross between a functional exercise and a tabletop exercise. Tabletops are generally just conducted with people using their manuals. And what they do is they give inputs as to a disaster that's taken place, and then there's different sections that have to respond to that. And then what I do is explain how I would respond, who I would notify, fire department, whatever the situation possibly is. For that particular one, it was a breach of the Soldier's Metal Dam. And then at the end of it, we do just a review for inputs. My input for that particular one was making sure that in their plans, they write down just a simple line of where the flow of water's going. That's something they don't really do in those plans. Usually, if Soldier's Metal's dam did break, people need to know that that's going to hit Sweetwater Lapway fairly quickly. Same way with the rest of Reservoir A, Doorshank, doesn't matter what it is. So that's kind of the process. It's going over who the people are, who the contacts are, what the processes are. Same way with the Lewiston Airport's going to be a functional exercise, where people are going to actually respond from, I think the Sultan has committed at least one engine, Nesper's County, Lewiston, and then they're going to have whoever else they call, you know, from their side. They've asked me essentially just to evaluate that one and participate. I'll do the best I can for them regarding that.
Thank you.
Gotcha. Any other questions?
If not, these today.
Okay.
Thanks for being here, James.
I can come back anytime. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we will have the new Item B Prosecution Services. This is an action item, and we have our...
Well, we actually, did Justin show up here to show up? But I have been told we have the acting prosecutor in the back here. Travis is going to stand in for him until he shows up, maybe. He's tied up with some illuminating stuff.
Commissioner, I think I'll have our city attorney just introduce it and then turn it over to your acting prosecutor. Please, thank you. Counselor, welcome. Please introduce yourself to the record.
Thank you. Council Commissioners, Jennifer Zanino, City Attorney. So we're here in front of you with Nesper's County Prosecutor's Office and the City Attorney's Office to request approval of the, this is ultimately a restatement of the Prosecution Services Agreement between the City of Lewiston, Nesper's County, and the Nesper's County Prosecutor's Office. And pretty much what it provides is, the city is typically responsible for handling all misdemeanors and infractions that occur within city limits, whereas the county Prosecutor's Office is responsible for misdemeanors and felonies that occur in Nesper's County and then felonies that occur within city limits. For a number of years, the city has contracted with Nesper's County Prosecutor's Office to prosecute state code-based misdemeanors and traffic citations that occur within city limits. This is an opportunity for the Prosecutor's Office to have more control and jurisdiction over the crimes that occur within Nesper's County because Lewiston and Nesper's County are in the same area. So, you know, Lewiston is the city seat for the county. It's also an opportunity on the city's side for cost savings and focusing our resources on the civil side of things and relying on the expertise and the resources of the Nesper's County Prosecutor's Office. And what we have done is the city pays for those services from the Prosecutor's Office. Over the last number of years, the city, there hasn't been a substantial increase related to the cost of those services. And traditionally, what the city pays for is the equivalent of one prosecutor or deputy prosecutor and one half-staff member. And the last couple of years, there were minor increases. This year, we anticipated there being a pretty big increase. And both sides took the time and reevaluated the expense it would be for each party. And the Prosecutor's Office proposed a new rate based on the expenses that they've incurred. And we have at least negotiated an agreement in which the, there will be a 33% increase in the contract price to cover the cost of actually hiring and maintaining a deputy prosecutor and that half-staff member, as well as all the resources and tools that they need to operate within the Prosecutor's Office. And then we've worked in an annual price increase so that the contracts will continue to renew automatically. That price amount will be adjusted annually based on a formula that we've devised. And then it'll just continue forward until it gets canceled, or the cost needs to be readjusted, or the formula needs to be readjusted. Any further questions?
Counselors, Counselor Spickmeyer.
So curious, and I think I asked this last time, is like here, the, the cost comes down to 55 cents? $153,660.55. How did that, you come up with that?
So I know, based on the information that I was provided, what the county did was they figured out the total cost it would be for salary and benefits of a deputy prosecutor, as well as the salary and benefits, as well as the materials. And when everything added, I mean, based on the actual cost of providing the service, it does provide for those cents. And I mean, we can round up or down, but we pay this in 12-month increments, or 12 one-month increments. And so whether it's cents or rounded, I don't think that, you know, here or there, when we're actually pinpointing that this is the cost of providing this service.
Just seemed odd, like you had a real sharp pencil or something.
We both looked at it with sharp eyes, and that's the number that we came to. Sometimes rounding up and down, when you're trying to justify the expense, isn't always helpful.
Thank you.
What was the previous, sorry, what was the previous amount?
The previous amount...
I can recall that number off the top of my head.
Okay, for fiscal year 2025, it was $115,398.
I don't have any questions because I was involved in this negotiation. I was going to ask Travis, one of our identities in the back, if he had anything to add.
Uh, no, Jennifer really covered it. I think really, just from the county's perspective, the biggest issue was the cost. We hadn't reevaluated costs in quite some time. I don't remember how. And really, just to kind of chime in, our office has the expertise for victim services. We have a city so that we can kind of really get into the criminal cases. And that saves the city some time and attorneys and some attorney hours.
Can I just go speak up just a little bit? Because we have a counselor in home that needs to hear everything that's being said today.
I was just reiterating that the agreement was good for both of us, given that the county has the resources, criminal experience, and attorneys available to prosecute these cases. That frees Jennifer up to do more city work than keeps her out.
Thank you. I'd say it also helps both parties because we're not competing for the same staff that want to do the same jobs. There's areas at the city that attorneys that are interested in this type of field can specialize in that they can't at the county, and vice versa. So it's a good way that we are working together so we're not competing against one another for the same staff.
And Jennifer, it's my understanding that each body will take it back and prepare or some kind of agreement and vote on it, and then...
This is the agreement. We have the agreement already negotiated and prepared, absent your input. As the governing boards between the City Attorney's Office and the Nesper's County Prosecutor's Office, we finalized the terms to the best of our ability, and we're presenting it to you all for your approval as well.
For a vote today?
Yes, for a vote today.
Then we're done. Vote bonds.
Yep, and then it's done for the foreseeable future.
Counsel President Cleaver, what's so funny?
Are you looking for a motion?
I'm looking for a motion.
Yes, we are looking for two sets of motion, preferably one from the city and one from the county.
Mr. Mayor, we're probably going to wait. Not in the against agreement, because it's probably against agreement. We're just not prepared for that yet. We don't even really have a clerk here. Thank you for that, yes.
Counsel? I think keep quiet, but I'm not sure. Chair Court?
Having a motion to approve the joint powers agreement between Nesper's County and the Nesper's County Prosecutor, and the City of Lewiston relating to Prosecution Services.
Moved by Counsel President Cleaver, seconded by Counselor Short, to approve the joint powers agreement between Nesper's County and the Nesper's County Prosecutor, and the City of Lewiston relating to Prosecution Services. Is there further discussion? Heard none. City Council members, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
I'm sorry.
Aye.
It's a roll call.
That was a practice run. Again, roll call. Clerk Brockin?
Counsel President Cleaver.
Aye.
Counselor Spickmeyer.
Aye.
Counselor Schroeder.
Aye.
Counselor Fordland.
Aye.
Counselor Wright.
Aye.
Counselor Hine.
Aye.
Commissioner Harris, thank you, Counsel. Any questions? Next up is the new Item C Airport. This is an action item, and we have our airport director with us today, Michael Isaacs. Director Isaacs, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Commissioners, counselors. I had the chance to get the work sessions done with the Lewiston Airport Board with a couple work sessions, and made a preliminary approval of the, approved the preliminary budget for the 25th year, 26. So I have a few slides for you. You're going to look at the paper or... You can just advance it if you want, that's fine. Okay. I only had one slide to show you. This is the high-level summary. We're just a tick over $1 million of total revenue for M&amp;O. Our total expenses are 1.7. We're running the deficit of $660,981. And it's split between, the request is split between the city and the county for 33490. And I rounded it down. I didn't have a sense again. Counselor, stick with me. Okay. So the next few slides will go through and show how we come up with these numbers. So for the highlights of the M&amp;O revenue, you can see this pie graph. It's, it shows where the revenue comes from. And the non-aeronal land generates the most revenue of $336,000. The parking is the second highest, but $251,000. Last month, the board voted, the airport board voted to increase our parking fees from $5 to $6 per day per car because our competition was $10. And with the loss of the United Service, we need to continue, well, we need to keep fair market pricing because the FAA has asked us to do it. And then they'll also make up the loss driving through less vehicles in the parking lot. And then as you look down, the aeronautical land generates $168,000, and then landing fees concessions, airline local order revenue generators. Last year, we were on the way to being self-sufficient. The airlines with United leaving, we expect a loss of roughly $173,000, 173.5, is what we're expecting to lose revenue based on the whole ancillaries, the landing fees, and what have you. Do a flourish. Next slide, or these next two slides are just kind of a cover of what we were hoping wouldn't happen, but is happening. Last year, we presented, actually maybe it was earlier this year, we presented what United did for the market, and how our prices went from 33%, the ticket prices went from 33% above national average, all the way to 112% below national average. So it was a 45% drop in airfare prices. The next slide will show that equated to $6 million that the, that the folks traveling out of Lewiston Airport saved just in ticket prices alone. So that, that whole scenario with United pulling out has already been reversed. Just got new slides from a consultant this morning. The next slide shall show, kind of the summary, we're at. The prices from Lewiston, Salt Lake City increased 14%. Lewiston, Seattle increased 26%. And then, to make matters worse, pulling in our competition and actually lowered there. We're already starting to see a downswing in passenger traffic, parking fees, and all the ancillaries. Our next slide will go over M&amp;O expenses. And you will see there that we reduced our personal services 8.53%. We actually cut one full-time employee and two part-times. They work for customer service agents. They were helping do the shuttle service. We're providing shuttles to WSU and University of Idaho. We've since dropped that. When United pulled out, a lot of our shuttles dropped in that in regards. So we went away with that. We're predicting, projecting to drop that 8.53%. We currently have seven full-time employees that cover the art, the operations, the maintenance, and the security, seven days a week. We have one custodian, and I have one finance magician in color. Very happy to have her with. But just me and Shiva, I finance and HR, administrative, handle all the paperwork, all the paperwork, from the phone, to paying the bills, doing the payroll, the whole, the whole camp. So it's, it's a pretty thin, lean team that we run. As you can see at the bottom of that, it shows reduced total expenses, $235,000 from fiscal to 2025. So that's an 12.9% decrease from last year. Any questions with M&amp;O before we move on to the capital? We'll slip over to the capital. And capital projects, AIP is the Airport Improvement Program. That's where the FAA gives us the entitlement money, the $1 million. We're actually doubling that right now with the bipartisan infrastructure program. So we actually get $2 million that's just pretty much guaranteed to us to do improvement projects. These projects are done in a multi-year. You know, there's, there's phasing where you have to do the environmental year before you actually do the construction. And then there's another year for closeout. The reason I'm bringing this up is the FAA withholds 10% of the funding until the project's closed out. So we can have the project done. We have to pay the contractors full price, and then we have to wait until 10% or 10% of the last 2% of the grant. That can take six months to a year. So that can turn anywhere from $100,000 to $400,000 that we have to have cash on hand. And it's, it's a bit of a moving forward type of flow as well. So it depends on the cycle time for the grants, when money gets left, and the project starts. Usually it's multi-year. It gets started in the fall, and it's finished in the spring. I just bring that up because we have to make sure that we have cash on hand to cover This year, we're going to repay the taxiway Bravo and add lights to it. It's that section on the bottom right. You can see the blue dash marks around. That goes to our main runway, and that is currently not lit. We're the only airport in the United States per FAA Surge Inspector that does not have lights on its main taxiway, to this main runway. We're going to get that done this fall. Hopefully, then we'll kick off the grant funding here this September. You can see on the left side, we have our new boulder that we received, a new snowboard. So we just received that. That's a huge win for us. It cuts down on the ramp snow removal operations by 75%. It's major improvement. These are the types of things that we get the FAA's money that helps keep our infrastructure up and help our operating. Also, in line with that, we're going to be rejuvenating, select a seal code on the main runway. The main runway is still fantastic. We're going to keep it that way. We're going to add taller lights to it. The lights, once you get an inch of snow pushing to the side of runway, you lose your lights to that small. So we're actually raising our lights with new LEDs that'll be more efficient and higher, so we don't have any operational safety issues to deal with. And we'll go on to the next slide. For capital projects, I'm not requesting, I'm not expecting any... For capital projects, I'm not requesting, I'm not expecting any subsidy requests for capital projects. We're going to be using passenger facility chargers to make our local match. That's a 93, it's actually 95% this year. FAA increased their, their match from 95, and ours is 5%. So we take that 5% and we pull it from passengers that fly out of the airport, out of the commercial air service. That's what we make our money to cover our costs. So there's no, there should be no local match money required. In addition, looking forward to next year, you can see, well, let's put it on the line. We have to reconstruct taxiway Delta. And that is the circle, it's pretty small on that page, but you can see the circle. That's right in front of Hillcrest. We're going to reconfigure that and widen it, put lights on that as well. In fact, we had our runway safety action team meeting at the tower today. And they noted that taxiway Delta, as it intersects across the runway, could be potential hot. Having lights, we had one plane actually go off there. They couldn't see where they're going and went in the mud, in the snow and that stuff. The lights will help take care of that. We're also going to acquire some new foam testing equipment for our trucks. There'll be no foam test, so we won't have to spray any foam. As you know, foam is very cancerous. I, we don't want to have staff. That'll all be paid for with FAA funding. We expect to finish up 2025, we'll, we'll end up with about a need of $275,000 finished last year. That's that cash on hand now. And then the next one is, is, I think I brought this up to you. The next slide, the terminal is, we, last year, we had a terminal area study. We looked at our study, our terminal, and studied, does it meet the demands? It's a 1960 building that was remodeled in 1995. There was no TSA at that time, they kind of shoehorned it in there. They, they highlighted some, the consultant highlighted several deficiencies where it would make sense to replace it. They gave us two options. Well, they gave us several options, but the, the two main ones are, do we remodel it? Or do we construct a new one, not a downtown building, a new one? So they, they studied both of those scenarios. We're, we're dealing with some of the things like inner capital projects I didn't mention. Those there are HVAC units, there's 13 HVAC units, and they're about $11,000 apiece. One's already been dead, so the others two, next two are kind of coming forward. They're all kind of weak, so we're going to, it's going to start niggling and guiding us, is basically what we're. With that, the next slide will show what the two options, two main options they gave us. If we were to remodel it, it would cost 30 to $38 million. And a new terminal is 56.6 to $72.3 million. The potential match, as you can see in the green down there, is somewhere around $6 million if we were to remodel. Or probably around $15 to $18, $15 to $16 million if we were to reconstruct really. The reason that these are much higher than I just told you before is 95% match. It's actually more 75%. Terminal, the FAA will pay for all the public space, but they will not pay for the space that the airlines are in that we can generate revenue on. Anything that's in there is what, 25% of it? Is not eligible for FAA funding, so that's why it would be a bigger match if we were to reconstruct or remodel. I bring this up, I know that there's probably not an appetite for this at this time, but I wanted you to know that these are some options that we have. And that if we were to do this, even if you said, no, you're wrong, we want to build it and we're going to do it tomorrow. That's great. But the FAA doesn't have the money for it now either. So it's going to be a timing issue where you are, if the city and the county are interested in remodeling this building, we have to show them that, we have to show the FAA, we're ready to proceed with this project and we will commit our funding to it. And then we have to wait for them to come up with the $50 million or $30 million. If it takes, even if you're ready to start tomorrow, it would take a couple of years before we can secure the funding. And then once we start this process, there's about a four-year window for it to start to completion. So it's a multi-year process interaction. And the last slide is local capital, and that is, again, no subsidy request. We do have, last year, we was here presenting, we have this multi-sector general climate and stormwater pollution prevention plan. We're hoping to get tied under the city and the county for that. This is a permit that's required because Delta uses glycol on their planes, their de-ice, and it runs into the stormwater. So we're not eligible to use the city or the county, so we have to come up with $30,000, $50,000. We're going to get started on it this year, used about $20,000 last year. And then for fiscal year 20, actually $30,000 this year, $20,000 is projected to expect for next year. We need a new mower deck, it's $9,000. Engineering services to cover non-FAA things is $5,000. That HVAC unit that I just brought up is $11,000. For our security software, it's obsolete. They don't provide any coverage or updates on it anymore, so that's $15,000. And then one thing that I got, unfortunately, we were unsuccessful to give is a set order for it. For a new paver that I just showed you, is to load all the sand and the chemicals into the sand bin, sand the runways. That wasn't eligible by FAA this time. I was able to give them four. We need them, and they're not eligible, and FAA money swiped, we come up with $15,000. So the total capital project, local capital is $80,000. And again, there's no, no match request for the paver for requests. And then the last slide I have for you is an opportunity to surplus some land. We have this section of, in this red eye there, you can see it's on the north side of Brighton Canyon Road. It's part of airport property, and it's not being needed for airport use. But we received FAA's approval to surplus this property. It's eligible. We had it surveyed a couple of years ago, appraised at, I want to say it was $260,000. We had it appraised again by accident, called the ticket. They, they appraised the wrong piece of land for it. So we got this free, it's 330,000, 335 is what it's potentially worth. Now, this land is owned by the city and the county. It's on airport property, and it would require the city and the county to approve surplus unit if you so choose. The airport has no need for it, so I'm presenting this as something for you to consider. If you're interested in signing, you can use that $330,000. Whatever you want, hopefully the opposite. That's what I got for you.
Thank you, Director Isaacs. Council commissioners, if you don't know, we have one of our Lewiston Airport Authority Board members in the audience today too, listening in. So if there's anything we say, it can and will be used against us in a future meeting, so. But that's good, it's good to have Katie with us here. Councilors or commissioners, question, comments, guidance, odds? Councilor Spickelmeier?
So Director, back on the, this new terminal. So did you say if the new terminal was built, the old terminal would be knocked down?
You could do, you could do that, that is one of the options. We would, we would actually build it in sections so we'd keep part, part of it open. It would, it would be relocated further towards the parking lot, so we'd usually lose a few parking spaces because we don't have enough ramp space. The jets are getting bigger, so it would ultimately, yes, the old terminal would go away.
So would be the plan to be to put the FBO in the new building?
FBOs can stay there. We studied that, and it's not, it's not going to impact. We would move it directly towards the parking lot instead of expand over to the FBO. So it shouldn't have any impact.
Mike, I got a question. In the airline business, have they come up with an alternative to glycol? Anything that is less environmentally concerning or are you?
Well, they, they do propylene glycol and ethylene glycol. They used to use ethylene glycol, and that's the hazardous stuff. Propylene glycol is the same stuff that you put in muralax, you can actually ingest it. But it, I don't think you want to break type for glycol, I'll bet you. But it is more by the way, more health environmentally friendly. But I, other than that, I'm not aware of it.
So, but I thought I heard you say earlier, because of that, you weren't allowed to pay it back on the city or the county.
Correct. As I think Public Court Director brought up, the 830 acres of the airport doesn't, it would have to be spread out. It would be very complicated for them to add us to the cities.
Commissioner Lakey?
What's the revenue that we're receiving from the recently returned charter? In the announcement that we have charter planes return, take the casino bunch?
Yeah, so, so we do, we are getting some charter flights down to Wendover or...
Mothlin?
Mothlin, thank you. That's where we asked for help. And surprisingly, they didn't even reach out to the airport other than ask us to use, to land there, they're required to land there. They marketed that themselves. They actually reached out to their customers, they had the plane flow, they shared with Passport. But what the airport gets is a landing fee, it's $2.09 per 1,000 pounds of aircraft. That's the, that's the revenue generating. And you get the passenger counts for the folks that be that actually college tours our appointments. We give another $4.39 if you pass.
And fuel revenue?
And fuel, yeah.
So in FY '24, the city's portion was, that was $500,000, right?
Oh, the match, yeah, it was.
The match. Last year was covered, you had a grant that covered them?
Correct.
And so this year, it would be the 330, 330?
Yeah, since I've been here, this is the second time we're asking money in the last five years. Otherwise, we use federal money. Last year, we used state money at Ken. We have 880, we actually got a million dollars, we ended up with 880 that was left used to cover operating costs.
So, I have a question. So how do you, you just save it, or how do you, you have this cash on hand needed?
Oh, we, that is, we have $300,000 line item to just for covering those, those overages where we have to float net load. So we have $300,000 created in a money market. We're working in to get with the state's money market, and we're actually doing even more revenue. But now, we have to have some cash on hand. We can't be zeroed out. It's too risky. We've got to pay the bills.
Councilor Wright?
When did we lose United?
We lost them in February, February 1st.
February this year?
Yeah.
Why did, why did we lose them?
Well, because Delta doesn't play nice in short words. They require subsidy to operate here, so we knew that going in. Delta kept lowering the prices down and playing hardball with them. Delta has a much shorter operating, shorter, lower operating cost, they have a shorter haul. So they just kept lowering the prices down until they were, they priced United out. They were continuing to require subsidy every year.
And now they're raising their prices back up?
Absolutely, there's no doubt about it.
I got you. Commissioner, I got you.
Yeah, just a few comments. One of them's already been said. Three of the last four years, the director has had grants that covered our portion. I think that's, that's really good. And the fact that this is 330 instead of 550, which was required before. So just another thing, when, when an airport gets to 100,000 complainments, that's when it becomes self-sufficient. And so it's important to get those airlines in here more routes so we can get more complaints. And eventually, the airport would be self-sustaining with its own revenues. So I just want to mention that I just, right before we came over, submitted a bill for legislation with IAC, Idaho Association of Counties. And hopefully they'll champion it, and it's a revenue bill that will allow for state grants for MRG. And I think that if that bill goes through, we'll be a lot more competitive to get another airline in here to, to take that United spot, maybe get Denver back. So anyway, I might come to you, Mayor, to see if there's anything you can do to help with that bill, given it through. Then on the terminal build, I just wanted to mention that it's really tight for the larger airplanes, like a 737. So the new terminal, one of the big advantages is that ramp space will, will grow in front of the terminal. And if we grow the county and grow the city, you know, now we have space for 737s to come in and operate easily. You know, we can, we can take the chargers that come in, but when we get actually scheduled service with 737s, I prefer the new, the new terminal, just because it gives us a lot more options with airlines. That's all I've got.
Director, still.
So I saw arc, arc, arc star, arc, arc, arc star. So I'm assuming they generated, I'm just wondering, this statement here, the United MRG saved consumers $6 million. Is that, is that on top? It doesn't talk about the money that's spent.
No, that talks about the ticket prices, the average, the national average. If you were to use the national average ticket price, what it costs to fly. We save $6 million, we save the passenger, the travelers $6 million with the ticket prices.
Director, you, while you're here, are you able to give the council and the commissioners just an update on any activities that are going on out there? Are you at liberty to speak?
Yes, I am, yeah. We have great news to share. We're going to be hopefully approving it with the Lewiston Airport Board June 30th. But Swice Engineering Laboratories is interested in moving it down here. They have a brand-new G600 aircraft. I'm just Googling it, don't know how much it costs, but I know it's a $600 million aircraft. They're moving it down here because of a couple of different things. The state of Washington has a luxury tax, they're charging 10% on these aircraft. 10% of $60 million is an awful lot of money.
Is that a recent tax?
Yeah, so. Yeah, you know, and they have a G550 that's going to come down. They already own that, that's going to be based here as well. So they're planning on building a nice big new building, front and center on their south side. They're going to probably take up that whole island, and they have room in the future plans to build another hangar right there. Great win for us. The other tipping point factor that they had is the fourth site that we had to make that lot developed, built, ready. We said it's ready to go. We have this, the county that I believe helped support $1.2 million of local money into this area. The FAA will pay for the taxiways and the drainage, but they will not pay for the pad that we can make rent on. They all had to be drilled and blasted. We had to get it all ready to go. We did it. It's all set, fiber, utilities, they're all there. But it's basically just, pour a pad, you start building your hangar. And they were really happy to see that. Holman is not, they do not have their stormwater set up, so each hangar has to have its own stormwater permit and design and build. It's all set for us. All they have to do is get FAA's approval for airspace, go through the city's process to build a hangar, and they're guns blazing, it's going to happen. The plane gets delivered on August 1st, we're going to have it based here. They're planning on building us hangars. Great news for us.
I think they'll like the weather down here a lot better, too.
Good job.
That's great.
With SCL, are they completely leaving Holman then?
No, they still have, they still have two aircraft that they, and I was keeping there. They have maintenance up there. They, of course, have their big offices up there, but they're too heavy to have it based here.
Okay.
But we'll keep the door open. They want to bring anything else down here, I told them we will move the mountains.
Yeah, it's a really good win, I know you guys have been really constantly in contact with them and, and trying to rectify that from the previous situations, so.
Yep, we can do it.
We'll put one of our best council enforcement on that. Thank you, Counselor. What about, um, related business to this increase in commercial service, like fuel step or anything like that, any changes there?
In, in fuel load fees?
Yeah, anything kind of follows that type of bill?
Oh, of course, yeah, yeah, there'll be, uh, that, that aircraft burns four hundred and sixty-eight gallons per hour, so we're gonna probably generate another twenty to thirty thousand dollars in fuel load fees, just one aircraft, so that's sixty thousand.
The airport will collect some of those revenues.
That sixty thousand will come directly to us.
Oh, good.
So, change subject, but I'm back on the terminal building, so does the airport have like a master plan, where you guys have envisioned this new terminal on a certain year?
We did, yeah, we had planned for it, uh, now, actually, we, we kept, we kicked the capital improvements plan designed for the terminal out of this year twenty-six, because I knew that there was not a likelihood with United leaving, it was, it was, it's really good timing to have full support, we, I mean, we were on our way getting towards a hundred thousand passengers, having, the airlines having five flights a day, and that, that was the goal, that's when we built the terminal, with United pulling out, we're kind of pulling back to see what kind of fallout comes from that. But, and, it's up, it's ultimately up to the city and county if they're interested, if we're gonna keep, actually, we'll do a lot, just keep it alive as long as we can. I have a picture that I'm gonna show to the board, last, uh, two weeks ago, we had a waterline break in the terminal building, we had a, like, four-inch cooling tower waterline break right next to the ticket counters, it was a lake in the terminal building, and it's dirty water, it's from old pipes and stuff, so it's all last week, the guys worked all night long, got it all cleaned up like you couldn't even look, didn't even see it from the day before, we got patched, so, that's the kind of team we got and the dedication that we're to make the terminal, we do whatever it takes to.
Well, you know, the city this last year signed another lease up for that plane on its debt, and, uh, at some point, probably with the county, we need to talk about if that's something we want to continue to do or not, but the city puts a name on the line for that. Whether the airport has an interest in funding, Counselor.
How are you guys getting, I don't know if it's actually affecting the listener or not, but with, um, pilots and availability flags, I know that was a, a strain for a while.
It is, yeah, and I have not heard much from, from our consultant on what that looks like from national, but I can tell you, we're kicking out a lot of students out of Houston right now, our operations went up six thousand, touching, every time you take off or land, it's an operation, it went up six thousand of those from the year before, we have, one of our three flight schools has nine students already, so they're cranking them out, never been a better time to be a pilot, you can start with making six figures almost right out, even flying cloud though.
Counselor Klein, do you have anything for us before we move on?
I was only wondering about the, if this would be the time to, um, recommend selling this surplus plan, or if that's, uh, something that we'll do separately?
Tell them the surplus plan, we're doing it separately.
Oh, um, Counselor, that, um, I don't think now's the time, I think the director's just bringing it to our attention as a possibility, but, um, I know that our city attorney's office is working on this, uh, and has drafted some language, so I can get some more information to you if you'd like, and, um, you know, at the right time, you, if you chose, you could possibly make a motion at a council meeting to get it on agenda item or whatever, but I'll get you some more up-to-date information on what's going on there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mike, thanks for being here. Thanks for joining us today, Kay.
You're welcome, thank you.
Okay, Counselor, next, we move to item D for desanitation, this is an action item, we have our Public Works Director Dustin Johnson here with us, Director, welcome.
Good afternoon. Now, I don't know, I get pretty used here, subject of sanitation. I have nothing formally prevent, uh, prepared, other than to give you a quick update, there's been some conversations between the city and county for the transfer station use agreement, so there was generally agreement that was signed, I think a dozen years ago, um, with stipulation of extending it, and either side wasn't probably the pressing issue at the time, so, uh, our attorneys drafted kind of an updated agreement, so I think it's in that first county's court right now to, to review, so we're working through that, that's just a housekeeping thing. Aside from that, um, like everything, I think that we've heard the theme so far, costs are going up, we've got a proposal in front of us, the city has a proposal in front of them for updates to sunshine disposals rates, so that's being reviewed and considered, and while I was sitting in this meeting, I got an email from, uh, Soton County, that they're gonna be, uh, our, our contract with Soton County is going to be up at the end of twenty-five, so, Doc is taking on that, so expect, um, tipping fees for our waste to go up, or to be adjusted, we'll say it like that. Aside from that, I don't really have any other, any other updates.
Commissioner Lickney?
No, it's, um, yeah, it's all the stuff that I kind of expected, so, yeah, I don't have any comments on it.
Dustin, do we have any idea that it would be increased?
No, it's, it's, it's predictable, but I haven't seen the books for a while, since I once was there and I knew the books, I think it's right around fifty bucks a ton right now, we're just short of fifty bucks, last time we, we talked about doing an extension, um, probably about three or four years ago, they ran out of public works directors over there, and so they, they didn't, they didn't have that opportunity, so, um, so we were trying to get on front of it, so we didn't see a big, big spike on it, which that didn't play out, so, I would expect it to be ten percent to one percent, so we're at fifty bucks now, fifty-five, somewhere.
So, um, when I went through the, the spreadsheets for the, um, transfer station, looked at all the disposal, I think I went back fifteen years, uh, and it was, or maybe thirteen years, um, what, it, it was about forty-nine dollars and ninety cents, and it stayed that way for, for thirteen years, so, what, what about this year is gonna make them, uh, have it go up?
I think, I mean, the same thing with everything, labor, fuel, um, and the, I'm not quite sure, because a lot of what they were building that into is closer post-closure, and how much landfill they would have to close, and so I'm not, I know there's been some conversations that were, they weren't gonna do a full build-out of, they, I think they have permitting up to three more cells, uh, and so if they're not gonna build those cells, that changes their financial model, so I'm not sure, that may play a role, uh, in, you know, what, if your, if your end date is, you know, and you're sooner, you're gonna have to have more money to close your post-closure.
On the website, they said they have thirty years of asking left.
Yeah, last time, that's about right, it was twenty-sixty-ish.
Yeah, I was just, I was shocked to see that, that there was no increases for eighteen years.
Yeah, yeah, and that was something that they, they, they were proud of, or are proud of, that it's, and to me, you know, for the valley here, it's a great service, I mean, there's, I think it's Boardman is the nearest landfill that has a tipping fee that's lower than us.
What available land do they have?
They have committed to not go on the other side of, what is that, six street?
Six, six street.
Yeah, so they, they were committed, just what was on the other side, so they, like I said, they can have four more cells, I can't remember how they're A D or A B C or D, I can't remember, but they're basically moving the offices, everything that's admin, storage, everything on the other side of the building, or the jail, or other side of the street where the jail's being built, uh, and then filling all that with, with landfill cells, and that would get them to the twenty-sixty-ish, but I haven't seen their projections, if, one thing COVID has taught, at least us, is people have not slowed down throwing things away, so they're, they've made it tighten up a little bit.
Yeah, just, um, interesting little factoid, um, I talked to a commissioner in Idaho County, and they're shipping theirs to Missoula, and Missoula, uh, tipping fee is twenty-nine dollars a ton, which is amazing, but, uh, the transport, it costs them seventy-six dollars a ton to transport it, and tip it, but their total is like, let me see.
That's a, is that a republic landfill, I believe, it's a private one, but yeah.
Yeah, I, I'm not, I'm not sure.
Well, we have options, um, Boardman, Moishatna, you know, um, those two, um, but they have different operational costs, you know, um, transportation for sure, that's it, it is there.
One time was there, um, in the past, and I think maybe you were, we actually did look at Boardman, and it was through that, I mean, we got pretty serious about it, it was through that negotiation, or that, um, you know, research, that the tipping fee was certainly didn't go up quite as much, as what it was predicted to go up, or planned to go up, but we did gather quite a bit of information about Boardman, and it made it an interesting option.
It was six dollars a ton back then, in Boardman, at twenty-seven dollars a ton of transport.
Yeah, yeah, the fee was, the cost wasn't competition.
So, Commissioner Lickney, if you, um, last time we met, talked about this, you were gonna look at possibly making some changes in the system, the subway system of the county, have you made any progress on that?
No, I'm gonna meet, um, I'm gonna meet with, uh, in the north waist, the twenty-third of this week, and, uh, Monday next week, and then I'll make my own decision after that, but, um, what we're looking at is just bypassing the transfer station, um, but looking at the spreadsheets, taking a transfer station, it came out to about ninety-eight dollars a ton, to dump it there as opposed to the forty-nine dollars or whatever their increase is going straight, and what I need to do is find out what the impact of the additional transport is, if we take Lapway as kind of the center of our county, uh, uh, for purposes of transporting garbage, that pack out there, and hold the sack, and, then, uh, it ends up being about six, six miles extra one way, and so that's gonna impact what, what the cost is, I'm just, I'm just, you know, frankly, just looking at the cost for the taxpayers, so, uh, once, once we need, and then I need a sunshine, um, I'll have a better handle on that, those are the numbers that I pulled out of, basically, to bump the floor of the, uh, transfer station, it's, it's about ninety-eight dollars a ton, and, and it's taken to Soton, we bypass that, and we just pay the Soton rate plus the additional transport, so, I don't have the numbers on the additional transport. And that's what I'm looking at.
Thank you, uh, Director Mike, um, give the commissioners just a short update on the transfer station floor, yeah, we have to do something there.
Yeah, so, um, what's unique about transfer station, I mean, we run our enterprise funds, and so the transfer, or the sanitation division is, is mostly contracts, um, which we were talking about, but we have our own facility, which is transfer station, um, it took, because of COVID, it took us almost three years to get the scales updated, just material shortages, got those done, and so now we're moving on to the next item, which got bumped because it was the road, the road into the transfer station will be reconstructed, then we will be doing the floor, so, um, the lifeblood of a transfer station is the floor, because that's what you're using to push, you know, all the garbage of the front floor, so if it is down, you're basically, you know, you're shut down, so, the aggregate's starting to show, um, which means, you know, its life is almost over, so we're working on, um, it's gonna be designed, and what's unique about transfer station floors, there's a whole niche of engineering behind it, because you can add all kinds of different additives to make it harder, hear faster, push faster, whatever you want to know, um, and so that, you know, every time you add an additive, it's just more money, and so we're gonna try and find that sweet spot, that building is, oh, it's, it's not a, it's not a pretty building, it's three-sided building, it gets a lot of exposure to the elements and, and worn pretty hard, uh, so, not interested in putting a Cadillac floor in there that will last two-hundred years for a structure that may only have another twenty to thirty years left in it, so, we're gonna be doing some analysis here in the next year, and then probably in twenties, well, probably twenty-six or twenty-seven, we'll be doing a, a tear out and putting a floor in there, and that will obviously impact, um, anybody who uses it regularly, and so we'll try and get out in front of that, and typically, I mean, we've already talked internally, Christmas Eve is not the time to do it, or, you know, sprinkling, you want to time that just so you're not impacting too many people, um, so, we'll, we'll do our best to get out in front of that, that's probably at least a year out.
Yeah, Mike, oh, go ahead, sorry.
Let me get to Counselor Spender, I need to ask about the SCL contract.
How much, so Commissioner, is your study looking at possibly doing away with the transfer station? Is that?
No, just the county not using it, yeah, we would just stop using it with the county, but, I, I will commit to this, um, once I, like, all my data and everything, we'll meet with the city before we make a decision, so, you can see my numbers, if I mess them up, you can point it out, you know, that, I, I went through, you know, the spreadsheets that the city gave me, and kind of reversed engineered how all that worked, and then came up with that final number, and so, and then I told the mayor, uh, meeting that we had a few weeks ago, that the numbers were looking like they were straight to a Soton, instead of going through, but what I wanted to say is, um, I've been researching transfer station, I haven't done this before, but, um, I, I like the tipping floor, it's, it's the best solution for a transfer station that I could find, uh, we had a lot of them that were raised, and, and I know that there are counties in Washington where people have fallen in, you know, and then they, they get these lawsuits, two, three million dollars for something, the tipping floor is really a best solution.
But once we make these capital improvements, you know, and/or if we have to test sunshine's, fees, because they haul from the transfer station to the landfill, might be reflected from that.
Yeah, I understand that county is a, you know, it's a big component of it, you know, I, I just want to have it focused on our citizens and taxpayers.
More questions, we will move on to item E, thank you Director. Emergency medical services agreement, this is an action item, we have our fire chief with us here, Ray Wrightmeyer, um, Chief, I will turn the floor over to you, thank you.
Good afternoon, meeting. The contract's been provided to the county, uh, this is a normal cycle of, of wrapping that up, um, and so we looked at, um, the fee structure and how that, that was organized in the past, couldn't really recreate it, um, as you go back to the beginning of time, there was a dollar amount that was started, and it was just added, um, cost of living and, and operational increases by a percent all the time, and so, what we did is we looked at the, the fee structure, um, now we have available to us the, our Medicaid, um, transport program in Washington State that breaks that down, and, and really looks at how, how much does it cost to do business, and we get all the different cost report, cost centers, so using that as a model, looked at the gap between the, the, what we are collecting and what we have, and, and the, and commissioners with a, a new contract for them to consider, and had for weeks now to look over.
Commissioner Lickney?
Counselors, Commissioner, we, uh, we have, you know, with the chief, a good conversation, and as you know, I was part of the city when, in the original, and so this, and these discussions were placed, county was happy to sign on then, and we're happy to continue with that relationship, uh, and fully understand why the numbers needed to be. And fully understand why the numbers needed to be adjusted. I mean, it's just a positive business and we are a customer. A lot of people that live in the county don't even realize that without this contribution the county makes to the city of Lewiston for EMS services, they would have very limited option for ambulance transport. And so this cost is going to be a substantial one to increase to the county. And we know that, we know that now. That's just part of our budgeting process. And also as part of that increase is the jail. And because of the timing of this, we, we don't have a lot of time to really look into it. But the previous contracts, which were negotiated, you know, 15, 15 years ago, the jail wasn't really a component. And then a few years ago, when I met with Chief Moncler, we, we just came up with a lump sum because the jail was a kind of a moving target. There was other factors to consider that, you know, many if not most of the population out of the jail are city of Lewiston residents. And, but we just came up with a figure of $5,000. And stayed at that number for a few years. That is no longer part of the formula as presented to the county. It will just be added to the per run cost of the service. We pulled some numbers from the jail and we kind of have an idea what that service is going to go up to from about $5,000 to about $17,000, $16,000 or $17,000 a year. So we have to factor that in too. So the entire increase, I think, is somewhere in the neighborhood of $300,000 or just a little bit below. I don't have all the numbers again. So it's a substantial increase, but the county's happy to have this option because without it, it, you know, it would take very long. The first assistance paper out, nobody, you might make the phone call, but nobody's coming at least timely. And a couple of things the county still needs to work on. And that is we have some agencies that respond into this first county and we need to kind of draw these lines so that, so the city knows at this point, you know, I expect to respond if it's $45,000 away or whatever. Somebody else is coming the other way. And those are people by all rights should be reimbursed of some sort. And we haven't, I haven't discussed them yet either. So I had talked to the chief. The contract in his current form is, is acceptable for this year. We might look into some of the aspects. And we have a little bit, and I think the mayor has brought some things to our attention, about state statute on some certain, state code on certain things. And we'll look into that going forward. But because of the time factor now, we, we just don't have the time. And our living situations, can't find the half the things we need to find anyway.
Nobody likes me. Nobody likes me.
So now where, I think we're good to go.
Thank you, Commissioner. Council, comments, or questions? We'll move on. Thank you, Chief Wrightmeyer. Luke's just a rumor number of five unfinished business. May I make, Mr. Comments? I'll turn it over to you, Commissioner Henshaw.
Uh, not really. I don't want to drag this out of going into the facility or in the process of moving. Few bugs to work out here and there. Most ongoing issues for a while is in parking. It's not ideal. We'll just do the best we can with that. Employees are walking for the most part. And as far as paid parking lot and a completed parking lot. A little bit of bad news today that we might not, we might not get all the asphalt done that we thought we would by the end of the year. But that will, that's not exactly ideal. We'll just do the best we can. Really, that's about it unless you guys have any questions about the third floor is open. The second floor, third floor is Commissioner's floor, prosecutor. Second floor is all the court stuff. It's actually operating now too. First floor is just the treasurer's collecting, is open for business. Not the tax money, but the others are in the process of moving. So I think they're shut down for a couple of days. If you're walking over to take a look, I mean, you have security at the front door, a little bit different. It'd take a little bit of getting used to for the citizens coming into courthouse. Just not walk in and head to wherever you're going. We don't even have our, 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 our gear equipment. It's like we're using some temporary stuff right now because it's, it got ordered late. Still, it's, it's not just a walk through process anymore.
Commissioner Henshaw or Lipton?
Um, well, I appreciate Chief Wrightmeyer coming over. I'm new and, and he explained the new contract to me. And I, you know, I agree with everything Doug said. I, I like the, the concept of the new EMS agreement. And I did, I did give Cassie and her family a tour of the courthouse. But anybody wants to, or I'm, I'm happy to just give me a call, have you a, give a tour. I bet you can go in there and see it. There might be a few things I can show you that you wouldn't see on your own, but yeah.
You know about me?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Is there another Cassie?
I got you two confused.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
Yeah, so, yeah, so anyway, if you want a tour, just give me a call.
Something like that?
It's a great building. I mean, it's, it's very well designed.
I mean, you're talking about Klein, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, you sound like Klein.
Oh, yeah, it's Jessica Klein, sorry.
No, it's not. It's a Saint Germain. I know, that's what I was saying.
It's Jessica that I gave the tour.
Yeah, yeah, no, I.
Yeah, I, I got your name as transport, sorry.
Commissioner, I do want to mention that the city was a recipient, if you didn't know, of a number of very valuable pieces of.
Sorry.
That the county has graciously donated.
My list.
That's okay.
I'll let you talk. Commissioner Lipton?
I think that if you would like a tour, you can contact this guy right here and he's good at it. No, I honestly, these last couple of months have been really great in our conversation with the city. I think that we have some real opportunities to find ways to save money, but also help this community grow. And today was another good conversation of opportunity, but also a lot of work so that we do so with our best foot forward and that we can look back and say we actually accomplished some. Other than that, I'll jump for a tour.
Good question. Our council members. Harding comments, council enforcement.
More of a, I don't know, it's kind of a question, but also just to see if you guys speak on when that existing building will be no more and that would take.
There's a process to that and we're going to be out. There's, there's a very small window for us to get rid of some stuff that's inside the courthouse. And I believe it's on the 23rd, that's when that timeframe ends. Everything's got to be out of there. We, we either sold or surplus, so we moved ourselves or whatever. 24th is turned over to the contract. This is something to change, you know, somewhat, but not much. We turn it over to the contractor and then an abatement process starts. And we've learned that you never can tell exactly how long that process is going to take. It was a rapid building. We allowed a couple of days and they extended it for a week and that was a very small building. So this one could be extended out there a ways. But maybe, I think they're figuring a month, a month, or maybe it was month and a half, but that's giffy at best. And at that point, then once that's completed, then the building will be taken down and then groundwork, perhaps there's a lot of underground work that's going to happen. Imprint and all that would need to be done before the cold weather comes because when the asphalt plants closed, then you're out of business. And it wasn't really encouraging, we heard today. So that's why things may change.
Public safety, abatement really comes down to how safely they can tear down things that might have unsafe. If point, an extension for a small building of a week in the courthouse could be, I don't know, a lot of work to be done to do it safely.
And what they plan?
I did want to mention the auto, we always talk about the courthouse, but we never talk about the auto license building. And that's the one that's in front of City Hall over there. So the auto license portion that will be open, they're taking a few days off too to move. But that will be the only component that's open next round. I don't know when the first day is.
I heard the 20th, 20th, 20th.
The, the driver's license portion, which will be moving over, that'll be probably the last customer service that moves because they have the building, they're fine. And so when the building gets all completely done mostly, and because parking is an issue there, we can't throw everybody in there yet because it's limited parking. It'll just be auto license for a while and eventually maybe a month. And when all the parking is completed, then the driver's license will be over. So that's where the timetable is now. Because there's a building coming down too probably in the next few days. They'll start on that. I see it's all fenced off and I don't think so.
Council President Kleber?
Thank you, Mr. Ray. Speaking of, I didn't go on a tour of the courthouse, but a friend of mine decided, instead of going to Las Vegas to get married, they wanted to be the first ones married in the brand new courthouse. And I saw that.
Yeah.
So I availed myself of the opportunity to call Commissioner Lipton and asked her, who do I need to call? Stephanie and she got older Kevin. The rest is history. They got married last Thursday. I guess they were the first ones to be married in the new courthouse. The new ones. Yeah.
Other council, Council Wright?
Yeah. So my first meeting with the group, the bigger group together, and this one seemed very informative and productive. I look forward to future meetings and work with you guys.
Any other council comments? Council Klein, words of wisdom?
Sorry, I couldn't be there. I totally planned to be there. My little three-year-old likes to stick her hand in her mouth still, so she likes to get mom sick. But yeah, really good meeting. Appreciate everybody being there and, and yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. We're out to the mayor comments. Yes, thank you, Commissioners, for your generosity. We did get a lot of, of good usable chairs and desks from the county and we are painfully employing those throughout the city. So thank you for that. I want to thank you for the nice pavement job on 12th Street. That looks really nice and it makes everybody happy going in and out of there. Thank you for being so responsive on that. Thank you for letting us use courtroom one the other day for a meeting. We used it all day and made good use of that.
That wasn't one, was it? That's the one that sunk down.
Courtroom one, we are in the old courthouse.
Oh, the old courthouse. Oh, oh, oh. And the air conditioning's so.
Yeah, we would have let you leave the new one.
Yeah, and you have a lot of great staff working over there, but I always would like to call out Stephanie because she's just been a great partner throughout this whole venture process. And whenever we had, you know, a question, she was quick to address it, of course. So thank you for all that your staff is doing over there to help make this transition ease on all of us. And for our part, we've been very patient with the parking. We'll continue to be patient with the parking. And once you're up and running over there, then we'll just have to find out the bugs that may exist, you know, such as the diagonal parking and getting folks lined out so they're.
Well, we haven't filled out that agreement.
Yeah.
For L P U.
Yeah. Yeah, the 12 spots for the city.
Yeah, oh, that number may have changed, yeah.
Was that 12 or 11? I don't remember. It was 12. Okay, well, with that, Commissioner, if you have any closing comments, I'll entertain them.
I think we're good.
Okay, I entertain motion to adjourn. To anyone. Moved by Council President Kleber, second by Council Leader adjourned. Those who favor placing a by-bye sign high. Hi. Mayor adjourned.